Good evening and welcome to tonight's public hearing. This hearing will include Columbus City Council's Health and Human Services Committee. I am Councilmember Priscilla Tyson, President Pro Tem for Columbus City Council, and Chair of the Health and Human Services Committee. I would like to thank you for joining us tonight for tonight's hearing. We will be discussing legislation that would prohibit tobacco sales to anyone under the age of 21. This is also known as Tobacco 21 or T21. I'd also like to recognize my councilmembers who are joining us this evening. First, President Klein, thank you for being here, and Councilmember Liz Brown. Before we begin, please be aware that this hearing is being recorded for rebroadcast on CTV, for Columbus Government Television Channel 3, and the rebroadcast schedule is available at www.columbus.gov. Over the last 10 months, I've worked with Columbus Public Health and a number of stakeholders to develop a carefully crafted policy that will prohibit the sale of tobacco products and paraphernalia to anyone under 21 years of age. The proposed legislation will also require vendors to obtain a tobacco license which will be administered by Columbus Public Health. Tobacco use has become a public health concern. Out of the interest to public health, the city has implemented the Clean Indoor Act 10 years ago to prevent smoking indoors in most public places. Now, we have an opportunity to increase the age of tobacco sales. As Chair of the Health and Human Services Committee and considering my work with Columbus Public Health, I am always looking for opportunities to improve the health of our residents. I assess Tobacco 21 with the same reasoning I would any disease or harmful behavior that compromises the health of our residents. When presented with information about the life-threatening impact of tobacco, it became clear that we must act to address this issue and believe the time is now. In central Ohio, Bexley, Upper Arlington, Grandview Heights, and New Albany have already restricted sales to 21 and over. We know that tobacco has devastating health consequences. Young people are particularly vulnerable, are vulnerable population. They are susceptible to becoming addicted to smoking and subsequently become lifelong users. An estimated 5.6 million young people in the United States under the age of 18 who are currently alive are projected to die prematurely from tobacco-related illness, and that includes 259,000 Ohio youth if there were no changes to the rate of tobacco use. National data indicates that 95% of adult smokers began before the age of 21. This shows that 18 to 21 is a critical period when youth transition from experimentation to regular use. People who start smoking by the age of 18 are almost twice as likely to become lifetime smokers when compared to individuals who start after 21. The Tobacco 21 policy is being proposed in order to help reduce health hazards and early addiction to tobacco. Last year, the Institute of Medicine concluded that raising the minimum legal sales age for tobacco products nationwide would improve the health across a person's lifetime and ultimately save lives. In addition, with Celebrate One initiative, our city has undertaken a major effort to reduce infant mortality. Smoking during pregnancy has been linked to premature births and sudden infant death syndrome. The data available demonstrates in Franklin County, 22% of women ages 18 to 21 smoke during pregnancy. This is twice the rate of smoking during pregnancy for those over 21. Before moving on to today's speakers, I want to mention one compelling scenario that was intriguing to me when learning about Tobacco 21. When we consider the drivers of underage smoking, high school students primarily get tobacco from their friends, who may be 18 and able to purchase cigarettes legally. If the sales age is raised to 21, this has the likelihood of putting legal purchasers outside the social circle of high school students. This can effectively delay and hopefully prevent youth from smoking. Developing the Tobacco 21 legislation was a long process involving discussions with many stakeholders. Tonight is another opportunity to continue the conversation. We will hear from our panel on the agenda and take public comment after their presentations. In order to speak during the public comment segment of this hearing, you must have completed a speaker slip, and then please limit your comments to three minutes. And with that in mind, I will recognize our speakers who will begin the presentation for tonight's hearing. Dr. Teresa Long, who was our Health Commissioner from Columbus Public Health. Dr. Long, the floor is yours.
Good evening, President Pro Tem Tyson, President Klein, Councilmember Brown. It's an honor to be with you tonight, and frankly, this is a topic, a subject area that is near and dear to us in public health, and specifically Columbus Public Health, because this is all about protecting health and improving lives. Tonight, I'm joined by a board member, Dr. Mary Ellen Weavers, who is also an addiction expert, but she will speak very early in our short presentation around addiction. And I'm also joined by a colleague, Erica Clark Jones, who leads the Community Strategies section of our Celebrate One, our community's effort to reduce infant mortality. So again, we will try and stay at a high level, and please, again, I appreciate the opportunity for us to at least share some more information about the why and the what with respect to Tobacco 21. Again, I would note that clearly, our board has set forth for us at Columbus Public Health, it's true across the country, that we do need to focus on some strategic priorities. Our strategic priorities do include reducing chronic disease, we'll speak about that, and reducing infant mortality. So Tobacco 21 is a key policy initiative that does have related community programming that again, is really focused on reducing youth initiation to tobacco usage. So I will stay at a high level, but let me just share with you Tobacco 21, let's see if it works. So what is Tobacco 21? It is a national movement that is focused again on increasing the legal age of the purchase of tobacco products to the age of 21. Over 200 cities have moved forward with this, I believe the count is 220-plus, and several states. I appreciate that Council President Pro Tem Tyson has shared with you those right in our local community, clearly Cleveland has gone there, but both communities, big and small across our country, have taken this step to try and again, reduce the risk, the health risks for their population. So with that, and again, what is the underlying issue behind this, is nicotine addiction. So with that, I would love to turn to Dr. Mary Ellen Weavers to share with you a little bit about tobacco addiction. That's it, sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Long. And before she begins to speak, I just want to recognize my council colleague who has just joined us, Councilwoman Regina Page. Thank you. And now, Dr. Weavers, the floor is yours.
Good evening, and thank you very much, President Pro Tem Tyson, and President Klein, Councilmember Brown, and Councilmember Page for the opportunity to talk to you about this important initiative. I have a couple of slides here, and I will start with an image here that shows you the brain. And to speak about nicotine addiction, we first just need to talk about several structures in the brain. On this image, you can see a cross-section here and representation of the mesolimbic system. This is referred to as the reward system in the brain. Once nicotine enters the body, it binds with a nicotine receptor in the ventral tegmental area of the brain. Once this happens, signals are sent to a closely located area called the nucleus accumbens. This causes the brain to release a chemical that is known as dopamine. And dopamine increases feelings of euphoria or pleasure and relaxation. This happens early on in the nicotine addiction process. The next slide shows you, hopefully, the next slide shows you a brain scan. And on the left side of the image here, you can see the brain, and the receptor or the reward systems are represented in red and yellow. Once nicotine enters the brain, you can see quickly that all of the nicotine receptors in the brain become saturated. And once this process happens, dopamine is released, and again, the consumer, the user of the tobacco product initially feels symptoms of euphoria or positive affect or relaxation. So with that in mind, let me turn now to discussing the neurobiology of addiction. In 1988, the United States Surgeon General characterized or categorized nicotine as an addictive drug. It has psychoactive effects, meaning it influences brain mechanisms and the functions in the brain. Nicotine addiction has been described by the scientists at the National Institute of Drug Abuse as an acquired brain disease. This disease starts in adolescence, and what's important to know is this is when the brain is still developing. And we know that the adolescent brain is quite sensitive to nicotine-induced neuroplasticity or wiring or circuitry or adaptation. We know from research that nicotine exposure leads to changes in the signaling that I described earlier to you, so that the brain begins to adapt to the changes between the receptor, the brain cells, and those reward centers in the brain. So because of this occurrence in adolescence, the key during this period is the critical time to preventing a lifelong addiction to nicotine. So there are three stages of addiction. The first is experimentation. This generally happens around ages 15, 16, and 17. This is the initial exposure to nicotine, and again, it's associated with positive feelings, feeling good, feeling euphoria when you use the drug. However, rapidly, we know that repeated exposure leads to this phenomenon that's called desensitization. That means that the reward system changes, it adapts, and actually, the user has to take in more nicotine, and they don't get the same release of dopamine. This chemical that causes pleasure, now its release is attenuated. And so, the user starts to experience craving when they don't have the product, and they start to feel some negative affective or withdrawal symptoms, unpleasant symptoms. This then leads to the second stage of addiction, which is this persistent, repeated use to avoid the craving, to avoid the withdrawal, and to avoid the negative effects. At the same time, the area of the brain that is responsible for decision-making and for judgment becomes impaired, and use then becomes compulsive. So this is my last slide, and it just represents the behavioral changes that occur as we transition, or as the user transitions from experimentation to full-blown addiction. And again, it's a function of the brain adapting or changing, the circuitry becoming rewired. So what initially was voluntary action, voluntary behavior that was accompanied by periods of abstinence or constrained use, now results in having trouble stopping the behavior, the use, using more than intended and using when it's not intended. This results in the full-blown addiction. And again, let me just say nicotine addiction is an acquired brain disease. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Weavers. And I will continue on, President Pro Tem, members of council, just for a moment, and then turn to Erica Clark Jones. So again, what does this addiction lead to? What it leads to, again, is premature mortality or premature death. We know that smoking is the leading cause of preventable deaths in the United States. Nearly 500,000 people die every year. The most recent count is 480,000 Americans die every year from tobacco-related addiction and smoking. We know that smoking kills more people than alcohol, HIV and AIDS, car crashes, illegal drugs, murders, and suicides, all combined. This is a major, major health issue. And lung cancer, again, kills more than all the next four cancers combined, that being breast, colon, pancreatic, and prostate cancer. So again, this strategy is about trying to reduce the risk and actually reduce the initiation of the addiction and of smoking and tobacco usage. Again, it's about preventing persons from being both at risk but becoming ill. So youth initiation. It really is, and what we know is that youth, young people who begin smoking before the age of 18, are two times likely to become lifetime smokers compared to those who actually initiate at the age of 21 or beyond. So again, trying to prevent or reduce youth initiation is the key aspect to this strategy. It's also very sobering to note that 1/3, 33%, of the kids who are under the age of 18 who begin to smoke will die because of their nicotine addiction. Again, it is about reducing the risk for a lifetime of health problems and very early mortality. So with that, I would like to turn to my colleague, if I can click, Erica Clark Jones, for a few words about the relationship to infant mortality and our work on infant mortality. Erica?
Okay, you choose. It's the right side.
Good evening, President Pro Tem Tyson, President Klein, Councilmembers Brown and Page. Good evening, and thank you for having me here as a part of this panel to talk about something so important to our infant mortality reduction initiatives. My name is Erica Clark Jones, and I serve as the Director of Community Strategies for Celebrate One, which is Columbus's place-based collective impact effort to reduce our Columbus and Franklin County's infant mortality rate by 40% overall by the year 2020, and then impact our disparity rate in infant deaths by 50% by the year 2020. While I am happy to be a part of this panel and to share my thoughts and comments about T21, I am also joined by other members in the audience, notably some obstetric experts that are also a part of Celebrate One and are here tonight in support of this initiative. So as you know, the city's commitment to reduce infant mortality is very aggressive, and it is one that is noteworthy across our nation, among other jurisdictions, also working to improve social and economic conditions throughout our county and in particular areas in our neighborhoods. So smoking is widely known to be a leading cause of preventable deaths of infants under the age of one. Thank you, I appreciate that. Women who smoke during their pregnancies are more likely than those who don't to have a baby born too small and too soon, or to lose a baby to a sleep-related death. Once a baby is born, exposure to secondhand smoke cigarettes, or secondhand smoke increases the baby's chances of sleep-related deaths. Additionally, smoking during pregnancy is linked to SIDS, as well as babies born to smokers have higher rates of certain birth defects, including cleft palate and cleft lip. Smoking during pregnancy is also linked to nearly $6 million locally in smoking-related hospital charges. As it was mentioned, what is disturbing is over 18% of moms aged 15 to 21 self-reported smoking during their pregnancies. More disturbing is that recent research suggests that actual rates are much higher, particularly As you know, with our work in Celebrate One, most of what we do is driven by the community. Through the work of our partners, our community partners, our community health workers, and congregations, supporting new mothers and changing cultural norms is paramount for us. To support this work, it is the position of Celebrate One to support laws and policies that reflect our community's priorities. Thank you.
So again, President Klein, President Pro Tem Tyson, Councilmembers Brown and Page, let me share with you what the goals of Tobacco 21 right here in Columbus will include. Clearly, that is about decreasing the number of new smokers, preventing tobacco addiction that we've just spoken to, obviously avoiding and reducing the risk of negative health impacts, and is about having a healthier and more marketable, more productive workforce. We know that, again, you've heard some of the rates, the very high rates of young pregnant women smoking. We know that 14% of high school students smoke, 4% of middle school students self-report as smoking. So again, we are really trying to reduce the immediate impact by reducing teen smoking rates, and again, the risk factors. So again, what will we actually be doing? So before I get to that, I just wanted to make a mention of the positive business impact. Clearly, we know that businesses have had an interest in this. Having a reduced tobacco usage in the workforce definitely lowers their health insurance costs, it also lowers their healthcare costs, it increases worker productivity, it increases also, and we've heard from our employers, about an interest in increasing the pool of both the drug and tobacco-free workers. I would also note in states and communities where there are federal military installations, those installations have voluntarily chosen to go with and adopt this Tobacco 21 initiative for those who would not be covered by the local or state ordinance because of the positive, call it business impact, the positive worker effect. So with that, let me speak about the Columbus City proposal. What we are proposing to do is to lift the age of legal sale of tobacco to the age of 21. That would mean, again, city ordinance to do that. Also, in the city ordinance is the placement of a retail tobacco sales license, the requirement to check identification for all tobacco and paraphernalia sales under the age of 30, this is a mirror of the tobacco sales laws, to display, a requirement to display the age of 21 signage at locations where tobacco and other products are sold, nicotine-related products, and prohibit the vending, the sale of such products in vending machines. Let's see if I can, a little bit further about this policy in action. Again, retail tobacco sales, the license would be proposed to become required by September 30th every year. The police, and there has been conversation about what would be the role of Columbus Police, they will retain their ability to have criminal penalties. And the public health, through Columbus Public Health, would then gain the civil enforcement process, and again, would be responsible for assuring compliance. So the key Columbus Public Health roles would include vendor education, both around tobacco, and again, this would be broadly both for vendors and the public. There would be education regarding the owner and the operator responsibilities around sales staff responsibilities. Again, providing signage and working with our vendors as far as signage, and of course, the importance of obtaining a license annually by September 30th. We also then would take on the role of annual sanitary inspections. We also will be working with a youth-oriented organization to have a youth compliance buy program. We then would also have supervised buys with our sanitarians involving youth under the age of 21 to make such supervised buys. And then finally, we would of course, be making notice to any of our retailers that are non-compliant. There would be a process for that, but again, all of them would be noted that they had had non-compliance, and after the first visit, we would then send letters and have administrative hearings, and then in our first witness buy, we would then move into a fee and a civil penalty process. So what are the proposed fees and civil penalties? We are proposing a $150 annual retail tobacco sales license. There would be fines for the first witnessed sales offense witnessed by a sanitarian, that would be at the $500 level. For subsequent sales offenses, again, witnessed by a sanitarian, those would be at the $1,000 level. The fees and fines penalties would be deposited into a Columbus Tobacco Enforcement and Education Fund. I would also note that after the second violation, witnessed violation, the Columbus Board of Health that is supportive and actually has indeed supported a resolution that should have come to you by now, supporting this effort, would then take action to either revoke or consider the revocation of a license or the non-renewal of a license. So as far as our proposed next steps, oops, we don't have next steps. I would assure you that again, we are very interested in what we learn tonight in this process, and of course, there will be a city council process that would unfold, and of course, enable if this proposal is to move forward. And then I would assure you, and again, I have a board member, actually, I believe there's at least one more board member, who will hold us accountable to working with you. you and moving forward this in a fair and equitable manner. So, again, thank you for the opportunity to brief you at a high level. Oops, I can’t even turn this. Again, I guess that means it’s the last slide that you’re going to see. The last slide is just a blank slide, so I don’t want you to think I’m — there it is. So, again, we are prepared to, at Columbus Public Health, to move forward, both on education, both community, the public, and, of course, with any and all vendors. So, again, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Long, and thank you for the presentations this evening. Certainly, the presentations that we heard are really around protecting the health of our residents, most importantly, to prevent the initiation for our youth to use tobacco products, and, again, to prevent tobacco addiction. Are there any questions from my colleagues?
Councilwoman Brown?
Thank you. I just have a question about one of the stats concerning smoking during pregnancy in Franklin County. Mothers aged 15 to 17 have a smoking rate of 15.7. Mothers aged 18 to 21, smoking rate of 23.4. Mothers over age 21, 12.2. I’m wondering if that kind of breakdown in the stats sustains over time, if it’s like a comment on the judgment of, you know, as you’re older and you understand the real peril, you’re putting your fetus in by smoking, and that’s why the rates go down over 21? I don’t know if I’m reading into that, or if you can comment on —
Councilwoman Klein, President Pro Tem Tyson, Councilmember Brown. That’s a really interesting question about what’s behind that. Clearly, we know what the numbers are, and you are commenting on something that actually the rates go down for pregnant women later in life. Is that about stigma, judgment? Is it about —
Maturity.
Maturity? Is it about pregnancy and some of the other risk factors for young pregnancies, and how those might be parallel? They may not be convergent as far as being compounding risks, but, in fact, there may be risks that, or propensity for tobacco addiction that may be similar in some ways to early pregnancy? And, actually, I’m wondering, Dr. Weavers, would you have any comment on that?
It is in line with what we talked about. If you can prolong use and prevent this addiction in earlier ages, we may see that women, as they mature, as they grow older, are not engaging in the behavior.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Brown. And so, now, we will hear a public comment. And, again, limit your comments to three minutes, and soon, you should see, I think we’re going to put it on the — are you putting the speakers on the screen? So, we’re going to show the speakers on the screen, so that you can then begin to just somewhat line up as you see what order you’re in to come up and give testimony. So, the first speaker is going to be Dr. David Sabgar. Good evening.
Good evening.
And please state your name and who you represent.
Dr. David Sabgar. I’m here representing Mount Carmel Health, president of the American Heart Association, Columbus Board of Directors. So, Council President Klein, Council President Pro Tem Tyson, Council members Brown and Page, it’s my honor to be here tonight. I’m here tonight to urge you to adopt the local legislation that raises the legal minimum age for sale of tobacco and nicotine products to age 21 in Columbus. Tobacco continues to be a significant health concern and is a leading cause of preventable death in the United States. The sad reality is that tobacco is currently projected to claim the lives of 5.6 million youth in our country, according to our Surgeon General. Though we made great strides, over 15% of Ohio high school students still smoke compared to 11% nationally. 7,000 children in Ohio under the age of 18 become new daily smokers each year. As we all know, nicotine is addictive, making experimentation or initiation of tobacco use among our youth especially troubling. It is a critical period for growth and development, a period when our brain is very susceptible and sensitive to the effects of nicotine. Tobacco use has deadly consequences for our youth. Early signs of heart disease and stroke are found in young people who smoke. And although cigarette smoking alone increases the risk of coronary heart disease, it also greatly increases the risk to our entire cardiovascular system as a whole. Of every three young smokers, one will eventually die of a smoking-related illness or disease, and, on average, smokers lose 10 years off their life. Smoking robs individuals of good cholesterol, temporarily raises blood pressure, increases the likelihood of blood clots, and makes it more difficult to be physically active. Increased tobacco sales, increasing the tobacco sales age helps delay smoking initiation among youth, which leads to lower smoking prevalence rates, saving millions of dollars in healthcare costs, as well as significantly increasing not just the length, but the quality of life across all populations. Additionally, a drop in smoking rates would also lessen the general population’s exposure to secondhand smoke. In closing, I think it’s rare that we have an opportunity, either as council members or as physicians, to save tens of thousands of lives, and this is a wonderful chance for us to make history. Thank you for letting me address you.
Thank you for coming down and sharing your testimony. Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Philip Schubert. Good evening.
Good evening, President Klein, President Pro Tem Tyson, Councilmembers Brown and Page. I am the System Director for Maternal-Fetal Medicine at Mount Carmel Health, and I’m also the Chair of the Prenatal Work Group for the Ohio Better Birth Outcomes, which is the collaborative made up of Columbus Public Health, the Franklin County Hospitals, as well as its providers. And we are dedicated to reducing the infant mortality rate in Franklin County. I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight, and I urge you to move forward with legislation to raise the legal age to purchase tobacco and nicotine products to 21 in the city of Columbus. Mount Carmel and our parent company, Trinity Health, strongly support this initiative as an essential public health action. More than 90% of tobacco users start before the age of 21, and tobacco remains the leading cause of preventable disease and premature death in the United States. You have heard and will hear many more important statistics tonight and throughout this legislative process. However, what you need to realize is that your action on this issue has the ability to help save lives, including those who need our help most, infants and babies in our communities. As you may already know, the city of Columbus, Franklin County, and the state of Ohio have some of the highest infant mortality rates in the country. Three families lose a baby every week in Franklin County. That translates into 150 babies a year die in Franklin County, and African-American babies are dying at twice the rate of white babies. Through the leadership of then-Council President and now-Mayor Andrew Ginther, every level of our community has responded to this crisis. In 2014, the Greater Columbus Infant Mortality Task Force created Celebrate One to implement recommendations to lower infant mortality rate and to strive to make sure that every baby in our community sees his or her first birthday. By enacting this legislation, you have the opportunity to further that cause. As Celebrate One notes, “Smoking is a ‘leading’ cause of preventable death of infants under the age of one.” Smoking during pregnancy can lead to low birth weight and premature birth and fetal loss. As you have already heard, once a baby is born, exposure to secondhand smoke increases the baby’s chances of a sleep-related death. According to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, e-cigarettes and other products containing nicotine are not safe for use during pregnancy. Nicotine is a health danger for pregnant women and developing babies, and can damage a developing baby’s brain and lungs by means of vessel constriction. Good night. Thank you. So, this legislation can play an important role in our efforts to curb infant mortality. In fact, the Ohio Commission on Infant Mortality made restricting the sale of nicotine and tobacco products to people under the age of 21, one of its recommendations this spring. As a practicing high-risk obstetrician, I have seen the negative impact that tobacco and other nicotine products have on mothers and their babies. That’s why I urge you to vote in favor of this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Schubert. Any questions? Thank you. Our next speaker is John —
Shacter.
Shacter. Thank you.
My name is John Shacter. I’m here on behalf of the Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids to testify in support of Columbus’s efforts to reduce tobacco use, particularly among youth and young adults. Now, Dr. Long, you heard mention some of the key statistics, that tobacco remains this nation’s number-one preventable cause of premature death and disease, killing more than 480,000 Americans annually, and over 20,000 in Ohio alone. Each year, more than 42,000 kids in Ohio try cigarettes for the first time. Without additional action to reduce tobacco use, as President Pro Tem Tyson pointed out, over a quarter of a million youth alive today in Ohio will die early from a tobacco-related disease. We must do everything we can to prevent tobacco use among young people. Raising the legal age of sale for tobacco products to 21, including e-cigarettes, is an important step that will protect youth and young adults from the unrelenting efforts of the tobacco industry to addict them to a deadly product. Experience tells us that to be effective, enforcement, youth access laws must be rigorously enforced. We therefore support the enforcement provisions of this ordinance, including, one, the requirement of a local license, and, two, the use of fines to support enforcement. Now, President Pro Tem Tyson also cited the Institute of Medicine, and they’re one of the most prestigious scientific authorities in the world, and just last year, they released one of the first detailed reports about the impact of raising the sale age of tobacco products to 21. And specifically, they pointed out that the report says that raising the tobacco age to 21 will, over time, reduce the smoking rate by about 12% and smoking-related deaths by 10%, which translates into 223,000 fewer premature deaths and 4.2 million years of life saved. So, we’re talking significant impact for this type of legislation. Raising the tobacco age will also help protect our youth from a lifetime of addiction to a deadly product. You’ve heard the key statistics. 95% of adult smokers begin smoking before they turn 21. About 80% try it before they’re 18. If we get you to 21 and you’re not a smoker, you’re almost certainly never going to become one. Delaying the age when young people first try tobacco will reduce the risk that they transition to regular tobacco use, and ultimately reduce their risk for serious and deadly health conditions. Now, you heard the key arguments, again, from President Pro Tem Tyson, that in addition to reducing, helping reduce tobacco use by 18, 19, and 20-year-olds, raising the age of sale to 21 helps keep tobacco out of high schools, where younger teens often obtain products from older students. Tobacco use is lethal and addictive. Tobacco companies target young people before they can fully appreciate the consequences of becoming addicted to the nicotine and tobacco. Once they are addicted to nicotine, it’s tough to stop, and the health consequences begin immediately and accumulate over a lifetime. Because tobacco is so harmful, we must do everything we can to prevent tobacco use among young people. Increasing the age to 21 will help reduce smoking and save lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is Mr. Al Edmondson. Good evening. Please state your name and who you represent.
My name is Al Edmondson. I’m a veteran, I’m a business owner, and a community leader on the East Side, and I represent the American Heart Association. And I’m here today to talk to you about Tobacco 21. I appear before you this evening to urge you to adopt the city policy that raises the legal minimum age of sale of all tobacco and nicotine products to age 21. Thus far, over 200 cities in 17 states across the country, including Bexley, Grandview Heights, New Albany and Upper Arlington, and even in Cleveland, and the entire states of Hawaii and California have taken this important step in protecting our children. National data says that 90%, 95% of adult smokers began smoking before they turned 21, and there are an estimate of 259,000 kids now under the age of 18 that live in Ohio will ultimately die prematurely from smoking. Something needs to be done. As you may know, tobacco remains the leading cause of preventable deaths in the United States, killing over 480,000 each year. It is known to cause heart disease, cancer, respiratory disease, among other health disparities in our communities. In Ohio, healthcare costs directly caused by smoking have been estimated to total $5.6 billion annually, and of the numbers, $1.4 billion covered by the state Medicare program. According to the Ohio Department of Health, many disparities, disparity communities across the state are disproportionately targeted by the tobacco industry. These disparities are based on income, education, race, mental health, and substance abuse. For example, 4.2% of those with less than high school education smoke compared to only 7.6% of those who graduated from college and even technical school. The tobacco industry also heavily targets young adults 18 to 21, which is a critical period when many smokers move from experimental smoking to regular day and daily-use smoking. It was quoted in 1986 by Philip Morris, “Raising the legal, raising the legal minimum age of cigarette, of a cigarette purchaser to 21 could get our key young adults —” market, can get to our key young adults markets. Additionally, tobacco use is higher in the military, which I know, because I was in the military, and I’ve seen it firsthand, and among civilians. In 2011, 24% of all active-duty members, personnel, and reported currently smoking cigarettes compared with 19% of all civilians, while tobacco users take an enormous ton of — Can I keep, can I finish? Okay, all right. Well, as a community person, I just want to urge you, and I know you care about our community and our kids in our inner cities, I urge you to pass this policy. Thank you.
Thank you for coming and sharing your testimony. Terry Fleming is the next speaker.
State your name and who you represent. Oh, I have written testimony, but I’ve been hanging out. I’m not going to read it, but. My name’s Terry Fleming, and I represent the Associated Food and Petroleum Dealers of Ohio, some 400 members, convenience stores, fast food, grocery stores. I feel a little bit like a Clinton supporter at a Trump rally with what’s going on here tonight, as one of the few that’s here to oppose this. And we do so not because we dispute anything that’s been said. What we do say is we agree with Cleveland. The city council and Mayor Jackson rejected this, simply because you’re not getting every city, you’re picking winners and losers. So, those service stations, grocery stores, anybody in the city of Columbus is prohibited, but you only mentioned four communities. I can name probably seven or 10 more cities and townships that surround Columbus that do not have this. So, you’re really not, it’s what’s going to happen, is they’ll go to those areas to buy their tobacco products rather than Columbus. We believe that the state of Ohio should adopt a measure that 21 for the entire state, level the playing field. Let’s not pick and choose. Let's not pick and choose winners. Let's not go to one city, one time at a time, and some reject, some, some adopt. That's our view on this. And again, I don't disagree. We don't, we're not here to promote tobacco. We're simply saying it's a legal product sold in the state of Ohio, and until it's not legal, they will continue to sell it. And we're just saying we need a level playing field so that members who are outside the city of Columbus don't have a huge advantage of those companies that are in the city of Columbus. I would also point out that the fines, the clerks have no responsibility here. The fines are going against the owner, who's never at the store probably half the time. And yet, the clerk, who could not do the ID check, and by the way, we do WeCard at all of our members. We have the WeCard prominently located in the stores, and we have training sessions for our employees that they have to card for both tobacco and alcohol. So we have that, and we would urge that everyone have that program. And I think most, I think if you see the most convenience stores anyway, at service stations, have the WeCard program. It's been in effect for several years now. Again, I'm not promoting tobacco. I'm just simply saying as long as it's a legal product, then let's level the playing field. Let's make it 21 for the entire state of Ohio. Let's don't pick and choose who's going to sell and not sell. I don't think that solves the problem that these good folks have talked about, because they can simply get their products at other places. Columbus is a big community, big city, but it's surrounded by a lot of cities and a lot of townships. I mean, if I was an enterprising young man, I could set up a kiosk in one of the townships and sell nothing but tobacco products and probably make a lot of money, because we're not, we're not limiting it to that. So I appreciate you having me here and would urge a defeat of this.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming, for coming down and sharing that, and certainly will take your comments into consideration. And I also would, also say that you could certainly go over to the State House and certainly share those thoughts, too. And so thank you for coming down. All right, so our next speaker will be Brian Daniels. Good evening.
Good evening, council members. I'm here on behalf of the National Association of Tobacco Outlets. My name is Brian Daniels. I am also a resident of Columbus. To follow up on Mr. Fleming's comments, last week, NATO Executive Director Thomas Bryant sent each of you a letter outlining NATO's concerns with the ordinance that you're considering, which would raise the legal age to purchase tobacco and vapor products from 18 to 21. Unfortunately, due to travel conflicts, our executive director was not able to attend, so I'm speaking on his behalf. As stated in his letter, NATO's position is that raising the legal age up to 21 will not solve the problem of reducing youth access to tobacco products. The underlying reason why the ordinance will not be effective is based on the findings of a recently released study from the U.S. Food and Drug Administration, which you should have attached to the letter that was submitted to each of you. As detailed in the NATO letter, the Population Assessment on Tobacco and Health Study sponsored by the Food and Drug Administration found that 80% or more of underage youth rely on social sources, such as adult-age friends, older siblings, parents, and even strangers to obtain tobacco products. So any new efforts to further reduce tobacco use among youth needs to focus on changing the attitudes of the adults that are currently providing these products to underage consumers. Also, individuals that, individuals that have reached adult age should have the ability to decide for themselves whether they purchase and use tobacco products. For all of these reasons, as explained in our letter, I urge you to not support this proposed ordinance. If you do have any questions, we would ask that you please refer them to Mr. Bryant, as stated in the letter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Our next speaker would be Mark Wewers.
While we're waiting, I can ask a question. I, in one of my materials here, something I'm struck by is that there, the effects of tobacco on youth are really large, but there is, in one of these materials, it talks about actual percentage of sales in convenience stores going to people who occupy that 18 to 21 age group is just 2%. So I'm struck by the fact that we are, this is, we're talking about long-term effects, that people who are smoking at very young ages are smoking later in life, but actually the, the business cost, when you look at a percentage of total sales to that 18 to 21 bracket, is just 2%. So I guess that's maybe not so much a question as a comment to fill the time.
Thank you for that comment, and that information is accurate, so thank you. Mark Wewers?
Yes, thank you.
And please state your name and who you represent.
Yes, my name is Mark Wewers. I'm a physician, professor in the College of Medicine at Ohio State University. I'm a pulmonologist and a researcher there. I want to speak to you from a personal perspective, based on experiences I've had as a physician, as a scientist at the Ohio State, and I've, I've been doing this for 30 years now. I have the opportunity to take care of patients, I have the opportunity, and have been funded by the National Institutes of Health for the past 30, 30 years, to study how smoking affects the lung, how the lung protects itself from disease. And so I've seen it from both sides. I've seen the struggles that patients have in their ability to quit smoking, patients with devastating lung diseases, and, and working, trying to help them quit smoking, realize that, in fact, what we've heard earlier is that, that tobacco addiction is really an acquired brain disease. And our opportunities to have an impact here, you, as city council members, I believe, have a unique opportunity. You have the opportunity to change the, the health of our youth that may far outweighs the opportunities I've had as a physician, caring for patients, and trying to understand the disease processes. So I would recommend that you make the vote in favor of the Tobacco 21. This can be the first of a domino effect that can sweep across our state and across the country. This is an opportunity for you to make that, that difference, and I really urge you to go forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down, providing your testimony. Our next speaker is Sarah Rutland.
State your name and who you represent. My name is Sarah Rutland, and I am the Chair of the Smoke Fair Alternatives Trade Association Ohio Chapter. President Pro Tem Tyson and Councilmember Brown, I would like to first thank you for the opportunity to speak today about my concerns regarding this pending legislation, Tobacco 21, that would include all vapor products. If Columbus imposed a 21-and-over age to purchase vapor products, there would be financial consequences for locally-owned small businesses, as well as health and safety concerns for young adults ages 18 to 20. Young adults make up an estimated 6% to 18% of sales in vapor-specific brick-and-mortar stores within our city. Those customers would undoubtedly have several options to purchase vapor products. They could travel to neighboring areas to purchase those products, and they would have, that would have a significant financial impact on stores that are located within Columbus. Unlike traditional cigarettes, our products could easily be purchased online with no knowledge of how to use certain devices, and that could certainly cause safety issues, as well as loss of revenue for local stores and a substantial loss of sales tax paid to the state. Vapor stores have always been a place for people to come when they've decided to make the switch to vaping, to gain knowledge about products, and specifically, safety. If vapor products are included in proposed legislation in Columbus, or eventually across the state, a significant amount of young adults would start making their own e-liquid, and a completely unregulated black market could emerge. Enterprising young adults would be able to sell a product without upholding any age requirement, any product standards regarding quality control or safety, childproof packaging, or labeling appropriately for nicotine levels. There are four ingredients found in e-liquid: vegetable glycerin, propylene glycol, food-grade flavorings, and nicotine. All of these products are readily available either online or in local pharmacies. Having large quantities of liquid nicotine in households in the hands of young adults could pose enormous safety risks to them and younger members of their household. The precedent has been set in St. Joseph, Missouri, to separate vapor products from combustible cigarettes. I would ask that members of city council in Columbus uphold the federal age requirement of 18 for vapor products to ensure that young adults who have made the switch to vaping continue to have access to a safer product, and set a precedent in our state to make responsible policies regards to separating vapor products from traditional cigarettes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dr. Long, would you want to address any of her concerns or get back with her those concerns?
Council, President Pro Tem Tyson, I'd be happy to follow up with her. We have been doing some research about this, and we'd be happy to share some of that information back with your office and other members of council.
Thank you. Our next speaker is James Jarvis. Good evening, Mr. Jarvis.
Good evening, how are you? My name is James Jarvis. I represent Vapor Station, and I am also the Executive Director of the Ohio Vapor Trade Association, which has 137 members in the state. First off, President Pro Tem Tyson, Councilmember Brown, I appreciate you, the time you've given me tonight to speak. I know I've spoke to a few of the assistants and some very passionate conversation that I've had over the last few days about this specific legislation. According to the Royal College of Physicians, which is a group of 35,000 doctors in the United Kingdom, vaping is 95% healthier than smoking cigarettes. On top of that, findings have been similar with London Public Health, up to 99% safer than smoking traditional combustible cigarettes. The sale of vaping at the federal level has already been put at the age of 18. At the age of 18, you're an adult. You're going to make adult decisions at that point in time. You are allowed to join the military, go to fight for our country, give the ultimate sacrifice with your life. You can go out and purchase a home. You can take a loan out to further your education, to decide what you want to do in the future, maybe become a doctor. You could buy a car, start your family, and move yourself forward in life. And our industry is here to assist those 18 years of old and up. We're not here to harm them. I've emailed everyone here on city council some studies from our own medical schools, including Cornell University. The university demonstrates that increasing the age to purchase vapor products from 18 to 21 has shown to push those ages back to combustible cigarettes. We know what that will cause. In the Journal of A.S. Freedman's Health and Economics, number 44, that I emailed everyone from 20,00, from 22, from 20, 2002 to 2003, and 2012 to 2013, smoking rates for ages 12 to 17-year-olds have fallen from 13.5% to 6.7%. In addition, the same timeframes, the rates have fallen from those that are 18 to 25, from 42% down to 32.8%. In addition, the Pesco study entitled "Influence: The Electronic Cigarette Age Purchasing Restrictions on Adolescent Tobacco and Marijuana Use," Dr. Pesco stated that, a health economist and Assistant Professor of Healthcare Policy and Research at Cornell, said, "All policymaking bodies should be aware of the potential increase in cigarette use following the Ns," which is electronic nicotine delivery systems, "age purchasing restrictions. We should regulate tobacco products according to their risk and evidence, which e-cigarettes are far less risky from the red, from the information that we have been provided." We should regulate tobacco products, sorry. Without commenting on the merits of raising cigarette minimum from age from 21, results from the study would suggest it would have been better, from a public health standpoint, to increase the age of purchasing to 21 for cigarettes only and not electronic cigarettes. Most recently, St. Joseph's, Missouri, City Council decided to separate vaping from tobacco products, which is why I'm here today, to ask you that consideration when this comes up, to please vote down the vapor part of this bill.
Thank you for coming and sharing your testimony. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
I'm Michael Wilkins. I come in representing myself as a consumer and employee of vapor products. I work at a locally-owned business here in Columbus, Ohio, and from, I started smoking when I was 16, from the age of 18. If it weren't for vapor products, I wouldn't have been able to quit smoking. I happily enjoyed smoking cigarettes and would have continued, so. And with my thought on the regulations, I feel like if you cut out sales between 18 and 21 for vaping products as well, that's going to leave people from 18 to 21 to continually buy cigarettes illegally, because they're not just going to quit smoking. If you leave tobacco, vaping products open, they at least have a safer alternative to fall back to, opposed to continuing to buy illegally. And not, not to mention the amount of small business within the inner loop, we have, I believe, around 100 vapor stores, and the amount of revenue comes, coming from that would be depleted greatly. And all I'm asking is I feel that you guys should separate vaping products for, from tobacco, because it is safer and it's a healthier alternative from those from 18 to 21 to fall back on, opposed to buying cigarettes illegally or other tobacco products.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins, for coming down, and thank you for stopping smoking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is going to be Dr. Bradley Harold. Please state who you represent.
Hi, I'm Bradley Harold. I'm here representing Ohio Health. Chairwoman Tyson, I am a pulmonary physician and a Medical Director for Pulmonary Population Management at Ohio Health. Pulmonary doctors treating lung disease far too often see the consequences of tobacco abuse. Lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer deaths in both men and women. More people die from lung cancer than the next three leading causes of cancer deaths Another smoking-related condition is chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, or COPD. It is the third-leading cause of death in Ohio and in the United States. Lung cancer and COPD are just two of numerous tobacco-related diseases. Tobacco's costs to the people of our community are too high, and I'm here to offer testimony in favor of proposed legislation related to the Tobacco 21 Initiative. There have been strides over the past decades in educating our communities on the perils of tobacco use, but we still have a long way to go, especially in reaching our young people. Consider the following statistics from the Ohio Department of Health. 23.3% of adults in Ohio, over 2 million, are current smokers. 3.7% of Ohio middle-school children currently smoke cigarettes. That's 28,000 children. 15.1% of Ohio high school students currently smoke cigarettes, and that's nearly 120,000 children. The Tobacco 21 Initiative would take direct aim at those who seek to supply tobacco products and paraphernalia to our youth. It would expressly prohibit the sale of tobacco products to anyone under the age of 21 in the city of Columbus, prohibit the sale of tobacco products from vending machines, and require an ID for those under 30 who wish to purchase tobacco. The initiative also calls for Columbus Public Health to administer a retail licensure program for vendors who want to sell tobacco. I appreciate your passion for and commitment to improving the health of the children in our city. Your collective support of Tobacco 21 Initiative can impact this public health epidemic and improve the health of our population. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Harold. Thank you for providing testimony this evening. The next speaker is Jason Gang.
Hello, thanks for having me. My name is Jason Gang. I represent Westside Vapor and several hundred thousand ex-smokers. As we know, as facts, vaping is 95% healthier than smoking. I'd like to back up and say I've, I've been in the trenches of all these conversations this evening, and we're all on the same team. However, I feel that taking away people's rights will not benefit the cause. I think the decline in smoking is due to two things: education and vaping. My, my store was My store was second in Columbus in cigarette sales for ten years, and I used to be proud of that. And I've seen firsthand the devastation of people spending their last money and their health problems. I've lost three out of four of my grandparents to smoking-related illness. To include vaping, a product that saves lives, and put it in a category with smoking, a product that kills people, is unjust. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gang, for coming down and testifying. Our next speaker is Robert Indian. Mr. Indian? Dr. 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 Good evening.
Good evening. President Pro Tim Tyson. I'm Dr. Augustus Parker. I've practiced obstetrics and gynecology for over thirty-four years here in Columbus and had the privilege of delivering some eight thousand babies in Ohio. I've been privileged to serve on the Board of Health, Ohio Better Birth Outcomes, the National Perinatal Patient Safety Committee for Trinity Hospital, and all these initiatives to combat infant mortality. At the risk of being redundant, a lot of the statistics and information's been presented. My esteemed colleague, Dr. Schuber, did an excellent job, so I won't be repetitive. But while we may rank number one or two in football, we rank near dead last when it comes to infant mortality. And as you know, many of those statistics adversely affect and disproportionately affect the African-American community. And I want to say that this translates into the dialogue better by addressing the number of infants that we lose here in Franklin County, three per week, one hundred fifty per year, and as it was said, nearly five to six kindergarten classes' worth of children a year. And I emphasize that these are preventable deaths, potentially preventable deaths. Infant mortality is a reflection of the overall health of our community, and certainly, if we can't care for our youngest members of society, what does it say about caring for the community at large? Many causes of infant mortality, as has been stated, those include premature births, babies that are born much too soon, much too early to be able to survive outside the womb, and sleep-related deaths are two of the major ones. But we also know the devastating effects that smoking has on our pregnant population. It's been said that eighteen percent of pregnant women admit to smoking during pregnancy, and it has also been stated those numbers are probably grossly underrepresented. Urine nicotine samples indicate that the rates are really much higher. I also represent the Association of Health Plans as the Lead Medical Director for Molina Healthcare. We've had numerous initiatives to try and engage women that are smoking to quit smoking. We know the devastating effects of stillborn, small-birth weight infants, and we've had great challenges in trying to reverse those trends. And I must say, unfortunately, it's not been met with great success in trying to keep women from smoking during pregnancy. I'll borrow a, I'll digress a bit and tell a story that Dr. Schuber and I were talking about, and with his permission, I'll share this. He mentioned to one of his patients the devastating effect that smoking would have on her baby, the amount of small-birth weight and those sorts of things. And the woman's response was that it would be easier to deliver that baby. And so obviously, there's a disconnect between the devastating effects. But myself and my colleagues like Dr. Schuber, we sit on the front lines and see the devastating effects of cleft palate and dealing with these patients that have these devastating effects. One more quick story. I used all my knowledge that I'd learned to bring a healthy pregnancy to a young woman that had lost three previous pregnancies. And when we finally delivered and brought that baby to full [beep], there wasn't a dry eye in the room. But the next morning, when I was making rounds, her mother and her were in bed crying, and I looked over at the baby, and the baby was doing fine. But I said, "What's wrong?" And she said, "Oh, Dr. Parker, you delivered her sister's baby two months ago, and they found the baby dead in the bed this morning with her and her husband." That may speak to safe sleep, but when we go into these homes and we see unsafe sleep environments, that doesn't just mean co-sleeping. It also means tobacco and secondhand smoke that we see. I'd urge you to pass this legislation to help prevent these preventable deaths. Thank you.
Thank you for coming and providing your testimony. The next speaker is Tom Geist. Good evening.
Hi there. My name's Tom Geist. I'm the Eastern Regional Director for the Preventing Tobacco Addiction Foundation. We run the website TobaccoTwentyOne.org, so I could probably talk to you for hours about Tobacco Twenty-One. But seeing the time limit, I'm going to speak to you mostly about e-cigarettes and other tobacco products. It's no secret that e-cigarettes have exploded in popularity. The National Youth Tobacco Survey said that it was about eight-hundred percent growth in the last few years, along with doubling the rates of hookah. The reasons why are no secret either. E-cigarette companies have mirrored the marketing practices of combustible tobacco cigarette purveyors in the past. Along with that, there are thousands upon thousands of flavored brands available online. A study done in two thousand fourteen found at the time there was nearly eight thousand unique flavors of e-cigarettes available online, growing at a rate of two hundred and fifty per month. So as that's nearly three years ago now, we could easily have doubled that by now. Many will tell you that e-cigarettes are a viable and effective cessation device. I can tell you that the evidence for that is mixed at best, but it doesn't really matter because that thought process is not the point here. Tobacco Twenty-One is not about cessation, it's about prevention. And as far as prevention goes, the evidence is clear. It's absolutely clear. Monitoring the Future, a nationally-done youth tobacco survey conducted unfortunately by that school up north, found that if you asked teenagers why they were using e-cigarettes, at every grade level, less than ten percent of them said that they were using them at an attempt of cessation. However, over thirty percent of them said they were using them because they tasted good, and over fifty percent of them said they were doing it just to experiment with something. That same survey found that if you account for cigarellos and smoking rates, we actually haven't really lowered the smoking rates that much at all. It increased smoking rates by about fifty percent. To get back to e-cigarettes, teens simply are not using e-cigarettes to quit cigarettes. More concerning is four longitudinal studies have now found conclusively that using e-cigarettes leads to using combustible cigarettes, even if you control for other demographic factors. So the conversation at that point is no longer just e-cigarettes, it's cigarettes. They're causing people to smoke cigarettes as well. This is because, as Dr. Weavers pointed out, e-cigarettes and nicotine use predispose the brain to a number of mental ailments. Those include PTSD, ADHD, schizophrenia, depression, anxiety, and of course, other substance abuse. So the conversation now isn't just about nicotine, it's not about cigarettes, but it's about mental illness and substance abuse in general. We have an opportunity with this ordinance to prevent all of these things from occurring, with an ordinance that not only is vastly popular amongst the public and the public health community, but could set an example for the entire state. We all remember that smoke-free ordinances started at the local level, and at the time, you know, didn't start as a local or level playing field, but eventually it grew to one as the state embraced what we did here. So I urge you to please enact this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down and providing your testimony. The next speaker is Mahdi Wassama.
Good evening. Thank you, members of the city council. Special thanks to President Pro Tim Tyson for sponsoring this ordinance.
And please state your name and who you represent.
My name is Mahdi Wassama. In my day job, I worked for the Somali outreach program at the Bakai Ranch, where I am a case manager for a youth between, anywhere between ten and seventeen years olds. I'm also chairman of the board of one of the local mosques, Somali-majority mosques here in Columbus, Ohio. I'm here to support the Tobacco Twenty-One Initiative. I'm also here to share with you the special tobacco-smoking challenges facing the Somali-American youth here in central Ohio, which is hookah, shisha, smoking. The regulated and unregulated hookah bars in central Ohio have undeniably became a gateway into tobacco-smoking and substance abuse for the Somali-American youth. As a case manager for Somali youth clients in my day job at the Bakai Ranch, and as the leader of one of the local mosques, I see this all the time. I have witnessed young boys, as young as twelve years old, claiming that they have been in an unregulated hookah bar and smoked there. If twelve years old can smoke there, what about eighteen and twenty-year-olds who legally can purchase tobacco? It's becoming close to a pandemic, affecting the social and health well-being of significant number of Somali-American youth here in central Ohio, as well as the non-Somali immigrant communities here in central Ohio. Hookah is a foreign product, and many of you might not be aware of what it is. Let me recite a few facts from the Center of Disease Control. Although many users think it's less harmful, hookah-smoking is many of the same, has the same healthy risks as cigarette-smoking and more. Hookah-smoking is typically done in groups with same mouthpiece passed from one person to another. Today, hookah-launches bars are gaining in popularity around the world, including Britain, France, Russia, Middle East, and the United States. Hookah used by youth and college students is increasing. In two thousand and ten, Monitoring the Future Survey found that among the high school seniors in the United States, about one in five boys, seventeen percent, and one in six girls, fifteen percent, had used hookah in past five years. Other small studies of young adults have found high number of hookah use among college students in the United States. These studies show past year, past year use ranging from twenty-two percent to forty I understand that this ordinance is not going to address all these issues, but at least it's a step in the right direction, and I support this. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming down and testifying this evening. Our next speaker, and our final speaker, is Ryan Valentine. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Ryan Valentine, and I speak on behalf of the American Lung Association as a member of the Regional Leadership Council, and I thank you for having me today because I also speak for my father, my grandfather, and my great-grandfather, who died of lung cancer and began smoking at a young age, who thought that it was safe and was told that it was no big deal. And these strong, brave men, who I got such very small parts of my life, did not realize that they were doing something that they would never be able to defeat. I watched my father crumble to the ground once in tears, and this is a man who came from nothing and built himself up to the point where he was one of the major corporate leaders, and yet he couldn't defeat his need for cigarettes. He could not defeat that hunger that came from something that not only possessed his soul but his mind, and all from something that was legal and available to anyone who wants to take it and pick it up and buy it from a store. I also speak for little two-month-old Harper, who sits in a hospital in Cleveland, Ohio today. She's been in NICU for two months, waiting for her adopted parents to be able to take her home. They can't because her mother, as hard as she tried, could not stop smoking while pregnant. And now that baby continues to try to grow and develop enough to live a normal life, all because of something that she could not beat, and that was cigarettes. I also speak for my sister, who was told that e-cigarettes were the way to go, and yes, she stopped smoking, only to be addicted to nicotine that comes in e-cigarettes. She can't ever be without it. She has to know where it is. I've actually seen her almost have a panic attack at the thought of it not being in her purse. It's money out of her pocket, out of her child's pocket, out of her future, and yet she can't, even though seeing my father, my grandfather, and my great-grandfather die, she and my brothers cannot put down the product that takes over their lives. I ask you, I understand, yes, this is just Columbus, but Columbus is known for taking the lead when others won't. I hope that, yes, I understand that they can go out, but that's a roadblock for those young people. That's a roadblock for them to get those products. And I ask that Columbus be the leader in this fight, not only for cigarettes, but e-cigarettes, and for the urban, my husband coming from inner-city Akron, which has led us to work in the inner cities of Columbus. Cigarellos and cigars are a problem too, because it is flavored and it is made for young people. We have to make a difference, and you have that opportunity to do so with this legislation. No, is it the perfect answer, but it is the step in the right direction that no one else is willing to take, and I implore you to stand with me and stand against tobacco. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Valentine, for coming down and sharing your testimony. And we've heard from a number of speakers this evening, and certainly for the individuals that came down and spoke in support of the vaping and that not being a part of this, certainly, as Dr. Long stated, we will certainly do our research and take that into consideration as we consider the legislation. Also, certainly from the last speaker, that I know that the Federal Drug Administration does consider e-cigarettes to be a tobacco product, and yes, there are some states that have won, some states, including Missouri, that certainly have taken that out, but certainly it is from the FDA considered a tobacco product. And this legislation is focused on tobacco products. So I want to thank each of you for your testimony, for taking the time to come down and share your comments, and to stay for about an hour and a half and to listen to the presentation and listen to each other's comments. We will consider, as we consider elements of Tobacco Twenty-One, we wanted to make sure that we had a thorough understanding of the problem and how we could address it in a meaningful way. The staff at Columbus Public Health has played a key role in this process. The next step in terms of this process, after listening to all the comments, is certainly to listen, take them into consideration. Our goal would be to have, to present this to the rest of the council colleagues, and we would want to have passage of this ordinance on December the twelfth. But again, we will continue to accept your information during this process as we move forward. Before I conclude tonight's hearing, I want to thank Dr. Teresa Long, our Health Commissioner from Columbus Public Health. I want to thank Dr. Mary Ellen Weavers, also from the Columbus Board of Health, but also from the OSU College of Public Health. Ms. Erica Clark Jones, who is the Director of Community Erica Clark Jones, who is the Director of Community Strategies for Celebrate One. And I want to thank Kelly Hikes from Columbus Public Health, especially for the work that she has done to provide information to us and to our and to the community regarding this issue, as well as Andrew Dyer, excuse me, from, I'm sorry, from Columbus, from the City Council's Legislative Research Office. Both of them have certainly done a human's job in providing information, again, to this council, to the community, and were instrumental in the development of this legislation. I also want to thank Erin Beck, who's also from the council's Legislative Research Office, the host of stakeholders that provide their expertise and support for Tobacco 21. My fellow council members, some that were here tonight, then others had other obligations and their staffs, but they certainly have received all the information. I want to thank their staffs because they make sure that we are here to serve our community with pride each and every day. My staff, Nicole Harper and Carl Williams, who certainly have done a human's job. We've had some big initiatives this week, and they've done a great job in making sure that those initiatives were followed through on. The hard-working team of CTV, who make these hearings possible. And again, I thank everyone who testified in this hearing tonight. And last but not least, I always want to thank the residents of Columbus, who make this city the best place in the country to live, to work, and to raise a family. Thank you very much for being here tonight, and this hearing is adjourned.